Meeting to order, please call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Holsa Beck.
Here.
Williamson. Angstrom.
Here.
Item number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes?
There are no changes.
Okay, perfect.
Again, please call the roll.
Then.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Holsa Beck.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Item number three, presentation of petitions and other communications, A presentation on McCoes Park Trails, Samuel Collin. Comment. Go ahead and you can stand wherever you like, over there is fine if you want.
Do you like me up by that?
That's great, yeah, right there.
Okay, thanks.
Where's yours?
All right. So. Uh, McCoes Park is something that a lot of us here in Boone enjoy and a lot of us go to. And all lots of the years and uh. There are a lot of roads in McCoes that are necessarily valuable. So part of my mission here is to try and raise awareness for these roads, roads as restoration. And so in my presentation, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Nope.
To my presentation, I have uh four main points is the proposal, the economic benefits, community building and funding. So the I'm Sam Conlon, I was born in Boone, raised in Boone, uh, I like fishing, I play guitar, I love the outdoors, uh. And oh, geez, I'm sorry.
You're good.
And that girl there is my girlfriend, she's wonderful, uh. I'm seventeen, I'm a senior at Boone High, I graduate this year and I'll be going to Iowa State University. That's nothing about me, let's hear more about the presentation here, so. The basic proposal is. Sorry, it's to revitalize the old low water crossings out of McCoes, it's about a half mile in length for the whole road and there's three crossings in total. So there's many options and this is what I like a lot about this plan. Is that there's, it's so versatile, you could do a bike trail paved or unpaved. Or a car accessible, one way road, kind of like the ledges, uh, just south of town, the state park there is a water crossing, so. You drive through the water, come right back up. Um, drive, any car through there, the water, usually if the water gets too deep, go close to park, but anyway. So the area to be restored is in red, like I said, it's about a half mile. And the thinner line there, that's about, that's kind of semi-transparent, is uh, was originally a walking trail, there's a wooden bridge out there that's still standing. So. So in terms of economic benefits, I would uh, I would say that. A lot of people would agree that there are good economic benefits to having good parks, um, eighty-six percent of adults see high-quality parks, information which is in place to. And ninety-one percent of people agree that parks and recreations are important services. So. People, uh, interested in. And moving here, so the NRPA has some economics. Uh, about this type of thing, so economic activity and ranking through parks generated uh nine hundred and thirty-six million dollars in twenty-twenty-one. And the value added through G, GP, I didn't, I didn't pay, and ranking was about four. Also like twenty-twenty-one, so there's a clear economic benefit having parks and being able to take full advantage of that, I believe we already do to a certain extent. So in terms of community building, there's also a lot of community benefits to parks. They serve as an ideal venue for physical activity, reducing obesity and the risk of numerous diseases. Um, park additions and organized activities increase park usage by nearly fifty percent. And uh, also, I'm gonna have all my sources linked at the bottom of this, if anybody would like to read those, I can, I'll send you this presentation and you can. Go through them, as at your discretion, I'm surprised.
And go too far?
Yeah, sorry. Oh, okay, yeah, and uh, parks with active amenities and staff programming such as walking groups or fitness classes are associated with significant increases in physical activity. Same activities also bolster moderate and vigorous activity time by thirty-seven percent. So this isn't only for the economics side thing, this is to build a healthier booth. As uh. And it does stop because their social health, so they've improved. Uh, parks provide a platform to bolster social connections through both structured group activities and informal encounters. Social connections improve health as people who are lonely are more likely to get physically sick or suffer from mental illness, I think that was pretty self-explanatory, but. And uh, so the Japanese have this concept called Shinran Yoku, which is essentially translates to forest bathing and it's the concept of spending time in nature heals the soul and so. It's in a study investigating the benefits of spending time in nature, recently found that doing so, that doing so vastly increased feeling, or. So sorry, decreased feelings of hostility, depression and anxiety in individuals with chronic and acute stress. So it's easy to see. The uh, mental health benefits to this type of thing as well. In funding, this is a part I'm sure a lot of people are concerned about, uh, FEMA estimates that, which is a federal emergency management agency. Estimates that low water crossings usually cost between two thousand and six thousand. And so with three water crossings, that'd be between six thousand and eighteen thousand total. Um, the upfront cost is typically high, but maintenance is low as long as the crossings are built correctly. And for other similar grants and proof of concepts, the Story Wa, the Story County Water Land Legacy Bond is a good. Uh, proof of concept for this type of thing, this provided funding to improving parks and trails along with other environmental initiatives. It was worth twenty-five million and passed overwhelmingly with seventy-seven point five percent of the voters approving. Obviously, if this were a grant, the uh, total would not be twenty-five million, but it's a, a, a good proof of concept that people are interested in this and would like this in our communities. So that's all I have for you guys today, uh, very short presentation, but thank you for listening, I have some contact information up there, if you'd like to contact me. Uh, get ahold of this presentation and I've got some sources linked on the slide after this one, so I can get all this to you guys.
Thank you, Sam, and it should be noted, Sam gave this presentation to the park commission as well, so they're aware of, of his ideas and, and things like that, so.
Um, should also be noted, I'm not asking for anything today, this is just for awareness, kind of, uh, you know, I can be ideas. And you guys said, so. So you know that. Uh, this is a thing that a lot of constituents think about, I have a lot of friends who would definitely enjoy this as well, or their parents and everybody.
Certainly not the first person to fly to my attention, that's for sure. Your comments for Sam.
Well done, Aaron, thank you.
Sam.
So much.
Good evening.
Sam, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, B Ames Regional Economic Alliance, uh, fourth quarter update, Brian Horn, sorry.
She used to have my flash drive.
Oh, yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, okay, great, well, thank you for the opportunity this evening, go ahead and share some, uh, we did put together the fourth quarter report, the city council. Be the items that have been provided and it's been provided to you, housing update, that, that's kind of a housing and project update of a, a number of items that have occurred. Are, are occurring and in progress, it was nice as we started a new year, leaked out to these folks. See uh, if they wanted to share what the past progress was through twenty-twenty-four, what they're looking for in twenty-twenty-five. Some didn't go very far into twenty-twenty-five, some a little bit further in the sharing of what they think will be occurring. Uh, a reminder, the top two are not just housing units, there's uh, some other projects going along with those uh, uh, top two that are listed there. Along with that, the workforce housing tax credits, just uh, a nice chance to go ahead and show up above, those are the tax credits. I- in use and uh, it, it's looking like uh, combined for the tax credits, a hundred and seventy-nine new housing units. To the Boone community. Below that, the Boone Area Veterans Center kickoff was a wonderful event, that was uh, a, a great uh, showing for that, that was a. Cold day that day for those that were there and uh, that feel pretty warm right now. But considering uh, the, the time of year, that was kind of the first cold one that we had and, and I was guessing we'd had about a hundred people that were there for that kickoff, which was great.
Yeah.
Very happy for the group that somebody did attend.
Yeah.
Moving to the other page, some of the general information we provide. Every report, so folks uh, can go ahead and compare to previous reports. Also, the Discover Channel RV there yet will air on April nineteenth, just that reminder, Boone is in there and Boone County quite a bit. And uh, really highlights and it shows well, the great things that are going on here. Finally, at the bottom, uh, very well deserved, wanna recognize Adrian for his award as the Alliance Volunteer of the Year. The work that, that he's done here in the city of Boone, of Boone County. Appreciate uh, very much, it's a pleasure working with the city of Boone and everybody and I take any questions at cabin.
So how many degrees of separation do you think tomorrow's ribbon cutting at the Dutch oven will be compared to the Boone Center, about forty?
Maybe, yeah. And uh, yeah, indoors, outdoors, thankfully.
Yeah. Brian, any questions, comments for Brian?
Thank you.
Alright, thanks for.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Item number four, public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing none, item five, reports of standing committees, policy administration Williamson is not with us this evening. Uh, B Public Safety and Transportation, Helsbeck.
Uh, no report, other than we will have a meeting on the twenty-ninth.
C Utility, Angstrom.
I've got a couple items here, um, hand the first one over to Perry, I believe. Um, it's discussed the lift station force main upgrade for the Daisy project.
Thank you. So just a quick update, uh, the DNR has the facility plan for the wastewater uh, expansion project under review, um. The first thing they do is review our projected loads and flows that we have for the facility in the design year, twenty years from now. We went back and forth a few times and uh, provided them some supporting information, they finally approved. The flows and loadings, which is the, the table on the first page of it. The flows and loadings didn't change much, um. Nothing that affects really anything that we're doing, it's just some minor, minor modifications. Uh, one of the reasons for that is um, the facility plan used loadings that were um. That ended back in probably August or so and they wanted us to add newer loadings that just came through in this last. So it modified, we're, we're satisfied that everything is good there. The, the biggest uh, thing I wanna talk about. Station and for industrial site. The wastewater treatment plant. As it turns out, uh, after we submitted the facility plan to the DNR, we got definitive information from Daisy. That they are. They're not able to or can't. Figure out a good way to equalize flow down to what we were hoping would be equaling down. Originally, we were sizing the font on station force main based on about thirteen hundred gallons per minute of flow. Um, their lowest. Equalized flow rate, maximum flow rate, that's kind of our concept, the lowest that they still. Down to is twenty-one hundred gallons per minute. So basically, that's eight hundred gallons per minute different than what we have in the facility plan. Order, how they have a flow, there's. We also have to increase the size of the force main a little bit, uh, and also looking at the um sewer system downstream that it connects to. Essentially would have to increase the piping downstream because they are in that as well. We took a look at three different options, the first option would be uh, the map, the very first map. That you have in your. Handout. Which has a couple of different types of line. Last path line is a new force main. Which follows the same route that it currently follows and comes up at the manhole where it currently dumps into. And then to the west of there, there's the blue dotted lines. You would actually have to upsize existing gravity sewer mains. It's very expensive, really disruptive because of the sewers go right down the middle of the roadways, basically, so we'd have to close those roadways down during this whole process. Connect people's sewer lines and so forth, um. There's a lot of things that we don't like about that, uh, that being one of them, also the fact that you've got high-strength waste flowing in those residential waste um sewer systems. And the potential, even possible sewer backups, if something should happen, that would increase the flows dramatically, so it's hard rainfall events or that kind of thing. So we didn't like that option, it's actually the highest cost option as well. The second option was to extend the fourth main, the vast of Monch Highway thirty. And ended at approximately um, first north and south, that's the roadway. Um, to the east of McCoes Park. Um, again, that's would be disruptive to those folks along the residential street that we would have to reconstruct with a new update. There, uh, so we didn't like that option as well as actually. Option that we're recommending would be um. Bringing the force main all the way out to the waste. Which is what we see. We take it down south to Highway thirty, uh, at this point in time, we may actually bring it up five mile drive before we get to thirty. And then bring it down again, just to get away from that, um. There's some bad soils uh, near the intersection of Sneddon and Highway thirty. Also, there is potential for that becoming aroundabout in the future, so we wanna kind of stay away from that if we can. Um, so that route is likely to change a little bit and then bring it all the way over to the entrance to McCoes Park. And basically down this side of the road. So.
That missed the second out to Perry.
Um, are they talking, what's roundabout?
Oh, the roundabout, right in front of Moffitt's. Will it miss it? It should, shouldn't it?
Yeah, we'll be, we're gonna stay along the northern edge of the right of way is what we're hoping there, so.
If we come down Delaware, um, which is kind of the secondary option.
It would miss that.
It should.
If it was down Delaware, then yeah, yeah, we should miss it less than move around above, yeah.
So that's the route we would. We would like to go with, um. This will cost of all this um, is one point six million dollars. Fortunately, it's, you know, doing something like this with a high cost. Uh, the one thing I wanna find out though is that um, we originally were looking at a twelve-inch force main um, to bring out there. Uh, which um, when we discussed that utility committee meeting, give us a lot of room to expand. Uh, the Daisy and that whole area out there, uh, we're a little bit limited. So we're thinking, you know, for um, a hundred fifty thousand dollars bumping that up to a sixteen-inch diameter. Which basically doubles the available capacity of that industrial area. Without having to put more uh, dollars in the force main. The only thing we would have to do is, is uh, replace the pump set or in the pump station with larger pumps, so we actually get to there, so.
Is, yeah, and we're, we're gonna make sure that structure is big enough to handle those pumps there, right?
We would, yeah, we would put provisions in for upsizing if needed. But at this point in time, um, what we're wanting, wanting to do is resubmit the facility plan, have the flows and loadings hammered down. Um, this, we will come, main and pump states. Um, and then over approval soon with that. The other thing that's happening right now is there's an anti-degradation report that's been written. That is actually out for public notice as of today. There, there's a thirty-day public notice period on that and then if there's some questions from folks, we have to just revise it and. And uh, let's send that into the DNR as we buy, so. Again, our can approve this facility plan until the anti-degradation report is approved. Hopefully in about a month, we'll have this all approved.
Are we gonna do, are we gonna do the upsides as an ad alternate or are we going to just hold on it as a council?
I can easily have an alternate for say a fourteen inch.
I'll bet you that'll be more expensive than the sixteen.
Yeah, that's the other reason why we, we thought sixteen would be nice to put out there because it's uh, more readily available.
Yeah, fourteen's a weird size.
I think it'd be beneficial to go with the sixteen.
I, it, it only makes sense to us because that way we would have plenty of capacity, if anything else goes out there, we don't have to worry about. I, and if, if Daisy should expand.
Right.
Exactly right.
So, any more questions?
We talked about it pretty thoroughly at utility committee, we had about an hour and a half long meeting talking about this. Um, we all agreed on utility committee that we, option three would be the best option with the sixteen-inch main, I just. As chair of that committee, I would think that would be, that's our recommendation, I said you guys can do what you wish with it, but the faster we get this going, the faster we can get it done. Just the least amount of disruption to the city and the residents too. And option number three is the cheapest of them. Cause they'll, they'll horizontally bore some of this pipe.
All the road crossings.
All the road crossings, so we won't have roads. And we don't have to worry about any um, smells or anything like that as well, going all the way out to Highway thirty, they don't have to do anything to control any odors that might come. Better for the citizen. And we're thinking future now, so. So. So that would be all right, my recommendation is to go with option three, uh, we would take a motion, I have to submit that application to the. Sixteen-inch mains. Sixteen-inch main, we can submit that to the DNR for approval, we can approve.
Okay, motion second, uh, please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Holsa Beck.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Okay, I got one more item on here and that is our INI inspection process and that's gonna be phase seven and Wayland can give us a little update on. Why he chose this area.
Thank you.
Getting there, sorry.
I saw it up there just a few minutes ago.
Mm-hmm. I know.
I should.
I have to.
It's uh, it's that time of year, um. This phase seven of the salt pump program does not start till July first of next year, but I, I start preparing now and trying to get a contract going and, and I've, and I've budgeted all set. We uh, we budgeted about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for this project this year, Angie and I with WHKS sat down and discussed our. Few of our options, we've got industrial park road and some of West Boone to finish up, but we. Came together and I decided this is a very densely populated area, it's gonna have the most houses and the most salt pumps in the area to get, get out of our system, that's. And I, I've chosen for the year, it came in at, at about a hundred and six thousand under budget, um. I'm gonna look at it and see if we can't actually add a few houses type uh, in that area to try to. Get up, right up there and get as much done as we can right now, but that's the area I'd like to go for and. See the western border's on Story Street, the eastern border, South Jackson up to the middle school and down south to Park Avenue and I believe. Country Club Drive is in that area, right in that, that phase there. Fairly heavily populated area, it's got the golf course in it, um, it's got uh. A lot of house along Southeastland, you see salt pumps kicking out quite frequently, I think we got a really wet area there that would really benefit for the project.
So again, we talked about this a lot at utility and we also talked about um, for future. To try to finish up the whole town of Boone and trying to budget some extra money in the next couple of years, uh, maybe like. Two hundred thousand a year to, to just finish up this last two phases is what we're thinking about, is what we have on our, on our docket here and finish up West Boone, but. It's our recommendation from the utility committing to approve phase seven at this point. And the reason we wanna expedite this is it would. Finish about the same time that the improvements to wastewater treatment plant would finish. We have a really good grasp on what's going down there, how many, you know, how many gallons we're dealing with and it would take it out of their, his hair. Beyond that. Two-year period of time because there is so much going on, so it, we just thought it would be prudent if we budgeted next year a little bit more money. Try to get done in three more phases, including this would be seven, eight and nine, so.
Do you think with the extra funds, it would be practical to do that or?
When we were discussing it, I, I kinda looked at the board, they asked me how many years I thought we had left and I looked at the board up there. I thought. Three probably, but if, if. If we put a little bit more together in two years, I may be able to get it done in two years. I'm gonna sit down with Angie and we're gonna break down what we have left and have a little better idea so we can know what we need to come back for funding, but. I think there's a good potential to be done in two years, yes.
And if we increase the funding, they have a little more flexibility to, to increase that if, you know, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead and make the motion to approve INI's phase seven.
Got it.
Question? Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, uh, D Economic Development Mormon.
Um, that, there's, there's a, a lot going on naturally, um, if you have a chance, uh, look at Prairie Place. The second set of townhouses is under construction now. Weather has, hasn't seemed to slow these guys down, tading has slowed down and the other development. Park and Marion have slowed a little bit due to the cold weather, but take a look at that, so things are moving ahead. Pretty well down there, like the mayor mentioned, there's a ribbon cutting at Dutch oven tomorrow morning. Um, to celebrate the new owners, so if you can attend that, that would be great. Uh, that's all I have, your honor.
Thank you. Sick Department reports, A Building Official Dave.
Uh, tonight I have two items for you uh, for consideration, uh, first one is a vacate request. The resident of twelve sixteen West Fifth is a request for an alley vacate, uh, saw north-south alley in that area. Um, this alley was looked at by staff, it's unimproved, um, it does have a uh. Curtain cut to it. Um, when we got the request, we did send out um, notices to the neighbors on this and we did get some opposition to this. Uh, the neighbor at uh, four twenty-three Franklin is opposed to this. Um, she wrote a letter uh, regarding this and has access concerns to her backyard. Uh, when I spoke to her in person, one of the things that she had meant to me was, uh, several years back, she had a utility shed built. Uh, in her backyard and the only way they were able to get back there with materials was to access through this alley. Um, again, though, um, this doesn't have a curb cut, so in order to do that, you'd have to jump the curb. And go back through the, the grass through this. Um, with all these things taken into consideration, we did take this to planning and zoning on the thirteenth this month. Uh, they looked at it, looked at um, the opposition letter, so on and so forth, they did recommend to vacate the alley. Uh, from a city standpoint, it has no benefit to us. The other neighbor did not uh, get any information back from her. In the uh, letter that we sent to her. With that, we're just looking some from some direction from council. Um, on whether or not you guys want us to move forward with this, um. The uh, application.
Question or comments, Dave?
Staff recommendation is to move forward, correct?
Correct.
There being no curb cut out, it's not like it's ever been used as an alley, so.
It is not, um, in fact, and if you look a little farther down on this um, map, there's. I believe at one point this alley, the, the right way did go through, the center portion has been vacated already. Um, and then there's two pieces on the either side of it.
Do you need a motion?
We would need a motion, yeah.
Move to approve.
Seven. Other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Holsa Beck.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, second items for you guys tonight, um, as we do every year, um, we're bringing forth the uh, twenty-twenty-four tax abatements. Um, for consideration. Well, Ray and I have looked through the list, this year we had uh, fourteen applications for uh, residential properties and one commercial. Um, the residential application, the total valuation on that was a little over two million dollars. And we had one commercial application, uh, one point three million dollars, um, that was egg certain for a spur line out there. Uh, so that brings a total of three point three million dollars um, in improvements. For the uh, tax abatement.
It's a jumpstart Boone, right?
Correct. As you know, uh, with the residential, um, they're entitled. As you know, uh, with the residential, um, they're entitled to do a hundred percent of the first seventy five thousand dollars. Improvements for five years, commercial gets a hundred percent of actual value for three. Um, new item for this year was uh with egg certain. And Andrea, you can uh correct me if I'm wrong, but the laws changed now that commercial properties, when they uh request tax abatement. You're required to enter into a minimum assessment agreement with the city on this. Um, that uh presented in the resolution and um. Permission for the mayor to sign off on that.
Move to approve.
Second, please call the roll.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kaho Kali?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yes.
Tulsa Beck?
Yes.
Everybody there, it's great to see.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, D city attorney.
No report, your honor.
C director of public works, Waylon.
Thank you, your honor. I'll point to the back of your package. There's resolution thirty three twenty five for the hiring of. Hiring and uh salary improvements for Jared Briggs. Um, as you're aware, we had a opening in Public Works, the. Applications and requests for applications went out December eighteenth through the thirtieth. We held interviews on January sixth and seventh, interviewed uh four individuals. Jared Briggs is our choice um for that. Position. He starts with us on February third and I'm just coming up here today to introduce him. Introduce him to you guys.
Awesome.
Jared. Then, uh, lastly. The uh resolution thirty three twenty one for uh commission for grant and funding. So a little history here, Public Works, police and fire and. Some of the other vehicles, city hall vehicle and few others, fuel their vehicles at Public Works shop. Right now, currently our tanks are thirty two years old. We've been uh. Knowing that this was coming at some time, but underground storage tanks have a lot of uh view on them and. Our insurance has been going up drastically. I think in twenty twenty two, it was around fifteen hundred dollars a year and it's up to about twenty seven hundred dollars a year. Basically, some of the things, the annual costs that I have figured out are coming out to be about eight cents a gallon on the. The gallons of fuel that we purchase. So just to be able to have gas at our shops, about eight cents a gallon. Right now, our card readers that we all use, uh, police, have them, fire, have them, they're encrypted and. That system was from like two thousand one, two thousand two and is no longer supported, no longer available and they want uh. The only, the cheapest option for us to be able to purchase fuel here in the future is a ten thousand dollar uh upgrade to this box. That being said, the next thing coming will be the fuel pumps at about twenty five thousand dollars. And they have to have a, a two hundred dollar a month subscription for electronic updates and stuff like that. Right now, there is funding available through the state of Iowa um this year and it sunsets at the end of this year. Where there are fifteen thousand dollar grants for the removal of these storage tanks. I've got two bids out right now. We have budgeted the fuel tank removal in this budget uh this year. This request for me to ask the D N R for this fifteen thousand um. Is, is that. I am working on a presentation right now. I've been talking with both chiefs on that. Bring another entity into our shop and provide fuel at our shop. That pents the burden, insurance and some of the costs off of us. So that, I, I will present that later. If we apply for this funding and choose not to do it, it's not a big deal. It, it doesn't matter. Um, but I just wanted to know that. I wanted to ask for this now while it's available and uh you still get it.
Do we need a motion on thirty three?
Yes, yes, we do.
Move to approve.
Duck it.
Please call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kaho Kali?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Tulsa Beck?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Three twenty five is in cent, right?
Yes. Yeah, that was four thirty three. Uh, D library Jamie. E uh parks director Mike. F recreation director Nate.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, I just wanted to talk to the council and uh. Mr. Mayor about uh a great opportunity that I've recently been presented with and that's to uh help out with the green space over here. Uh, on story and age. Uh, much uh appreciation to all the folks that have helped with that in the past and before. Great opportunity. Maybe doing some different things and some new things there, but I've been uh, I've attended one nights on the green committee meeting already and a lot of exciting things coming. In respect, a few things that I did, I have learned uh in my short time knowing about this is that uh. Picnic tables are a good idea for the green space and we're looking into that and. Kind of figured uh that into the budget net coming up. Also, it looks like the staging area could use a little staining. Um, the flagpole holders might need a little bit of maintenance and. We have a pigeon mitigation issue.
Yes.
So I uh went, went over and looked and we still get some ideas. So I've got the picnic tables priced out to an extent, so I can give you better options. I don't know about. So I'll talk to Terry about that. Um. One other thing, um, we're having a kind of a club sports town hall. Next Thursday, the thirtieth at six in the auditorium. That's just kind of key stakeholders and. The local club, sports activities teams kind of to get together and talk about challenges and opportunities that, that are, are here. Uh, Nate Narum. Uh, kind of brought us to my attention and he's gonna help facilitate it. Um. And I, I think it's gonna be a good opportunity for people to get in the room and talk and see how we can all work together for improvement of, of the youth in those programs. Um, and lastly, uh, I did apply uh with your permission to the Boone Force Grant, which we did receive and we also. Received the pre uh patent grant as well. So those are two positives as we look at programming. Thanks. Any questions?
Yeah, that all sounds really great. Thank you. Okay, uh, uh, D engineer Perry. Uh, H public safety chief Adam.
Yes, your honor, just a couple of quick things. Uh, with Sam being here tonight, uh, normally we uh teach an E M T class in the school. Unfortunately, this year. Uh, we didn't have enough students to, to be able to hold that, but what we did is worked out with the edge program, which was. How the E M T program um came about. Uh, this year we have three students doing an internship. It's a non paid internship. There's no, no ties to any. Grants or anything, Andrea. I, she gives me the, looking at, giving me the look, but we have three students, uh, three seniors this year from the high school. Uh, that are coming up Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday and they are uh learning about all the duties and, and uh doing some training with the firefighters uh this semester. So. It's a great opportunity. Sam's a good kid. He's, he's been involved and very, uh, so it, it didn't surprise me to see him put together a little presentation and uh do that. Uh, the second thing I wanted to do is update is uh if you've all heard or seen on Facebook, uh, the Iowa Firefighters Association, which is a, uh, the volunteer group of firefighters. Uh, across Iowa is holding their convention out at the Central Iowa Expo um site, uh, the same week as super nationals. Um, we met with them uh the other day. Uh, they originally wanted to try to. Uh, have a parade and, and some uh different things in town and just wasn't gonna, the parade just wasn't gonna work because of the manpower intensive and with super nationals going on and everything. Uh, but Chief Webold uh came up with a great idea uh with, they're gonna do uh something similar to like a tractor ride where. They'll still kind of go around town, no lights and sirens, but they'll have a route uh that they'll work with the chief on and uh. Uh, to be able to parade their antique trucks that they bring to this convention. Uh, they're also gonna do a, a few different things here in town, but shouldn't really be. Uh, negligible on uh services needed from our community, but it was a good positive meeting and uh it's good that they're, you know, coming to the community and those kind of things. So. Trying to get it pushed off a week one way or the other, but it's for nationals, but. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Chief Webold.
No report, your honor.
Thank you. I assistant city administrator Andrea.
Uh, yes, um, inside your um packet, you guys found the hotel uh grant agreement template. Uh, this is a template um that I plan on using for both the human service uh grants and the art board grants. Uh, with the art board going through economic development, I did uh pass it on to um Mormon to confirm that this would meet uh his needs. Um, this uh grant application defines the use of the funds. It provides a timeline which the funds must be used and it requires any unused funds to be returned to the city. It also specifies record, record keeping requirements and an annual report uh that includes copies of receipts. Those receipts are required um. For the grant that they are being provided. Uh, so with that, um, I would take questions or a motion to approve this grant template.
I appreciate you doing that.
Duck it.
Uh, questions? Please follow the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Kaho Kali?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Tulsa Beck?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Uh, yes, one more thing. I have a resolution in the consent agenda for a pay request for W H R. In the amount of four hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, this is for materials and mobilization of the, for the Limes Liker project. Uh, the construction was scheduled to start today um with a completion date in May. Um, again, that isn't the consent agenda. So is there any questions on that?
Okay, city administrator.
Thank you, sir. First item is resolution number three, three, two, two, authorized execution of supplemental settlement agreement between the city of Boone and the Boone County Board of Supervisors. As trustees of the drainage district number one thirty seven. If you remember in the past. We were involved in litigation with the county on solutions to fix uh drainage number one thirty seven. Uh, it, in the litigation, it came to a settlement that the city would have been required to spend. A hundred and fifty thousand approximately to fix that. Uh, some of that money was coming from the county. The city, uh, quite frankly, that would have been a waste of money to do it with what we can do over there through maintenance, everything at Public Works. Uh, staff has been working with supervisor Sean Bryant. Looking at alternatives, so we're not spending that amount of money. Uh, we came with the solution on, on what we will do and it's in the agreement that's in the packet. And the supervisors this past last Wednesday agreed with this and signed off on it. So it's here now for your approval. Uh, for the mayor and myself uh to be able to sign off on it and then uh it will put this to bed. Oh.
Finally gonna go away.
Yeah, so I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I would take a motion to approve resolution number.
Positive resolution to the filling issue.
Mm hmm.
I'll take a motion to approve.
We'll move to approve.
Duck it.
Please call the roll.
Kaho Kali?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Tulsa Beck?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
My second item is a resolution number three, three, two, three, authorized the execution of the agreement for funding between. City of Boone and our Department of Transportation. This is for the rise grant for Hancock Extension. The agreement is in the packet as well. Uh, this is just over a three million dollar grant that the city is receiving uh from the D O T. Our uh amount is eighty percent of that and the amount of about seven fifty six, three, three for the, just, this is just for the grant. Uh, so I'll take a motion to approve that if there are no questions for me.
Move to approve.
Please call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Tulsa Beck?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes. Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kaho Kali?
Yeah.
Then just one other thing, if I may. So we talked in the past about a hotel uh. Looking at uh updated report on the probability of a hotel. Just to let you know, I, I don't need a vote tonight. Just listen to the name. Spending some of my time on that now. I have started that project and I hope to have. A uh R F P ready for your review here in the next uh few weeks.
That's just the hotel study, right, Bill?
Hotel study and uh as I'm working on the proposal, I may throw in uh unless you all don't want me to a restaurant, include a. Restaurant feasibility as well.
Certainly, yes, absolutely.
Be great.
Sure.
So hopefully I'll have that something to you shortly so that we can uh. Make a, a vote on at some point to move forward and request for those R F Ps. Thank you. That's all.
Item number seven, incentive agenda. All items listed in the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
Approved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Tulsa Beck?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kaho Kali? Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, uh. Eight ordinance we have known, uh, nine merit comments. Um, just got uh, this place on my, my desk here. I think it's good to highlight uh. Thanks for work. Uh, thanks to the city leaders uh and workers for putting forward the newsletters about city events and policies. About a true local newspaper covering events and issues, which Republican did. Have the best source for reliable information about Boone. Thank you. So that came into the website, a compliment about uh the press releases we've been able to send out uh down zip works. And I look forward to putting forward more of those in the future and developing on the website or on the website and on Facebook pages and. Encourage people to sign up for email. Uh, number ten, council member comments.
Our next meeting would be February three, correct? I will be absent. I will be on a cruise. Thank you.
All right, thank. Okay. Meeting is adjourned.